Okay, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me in prayer, please? Father, we do come to you tonight thanking you for our country and this flag and for the men and women that have made sacrifices for us to have this freedom. We just thank you also for this community, Father. We thank you for the seasons that's coming up, all of October, November, and December. We're just gonna have a ton of people coming through this town and looking at how great we -- a community that we are and enjoy the fellowship of this community. And we just pray that you be with each organization, each group that is planning and doing things for our tourist people and also for our regular community. And we just want to thank you for that. We want to thank you for these people here in this room that commit their lives on a day-to-day basis for making this community a great place. We just ask that your blessing upon this meeting, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Call to order, our city council meeting of October 20th. Do we have any public comments? None? The number three item on the agenda is the consent agenda, consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of our October 6th meeting, and B is the denial of a tort claim as has been recommended by OMEG. I will entertain a motion in a second. Any discussion of these points? Please submit your votes.
I'll vote for Ren.
Let's read the votes. It's unanimous by all members present to approve those two consent agenda items. Item number four, discussion, possible action to appoint members for the three vacancies of the Guthrie Convention and Visitors Bureau. We were extremely fortunate to have eight candidates, and the council has seen all of those applications, I believe, or at least it's available to them, and eight incredibly qualified individuals, and we're filling three vacancies. Again, it's a relatively new bureau or board for us. The individuals, three individuals that are going off, or at least their term is expiring, or for one-year terms, and the nomination is for three-year terms for the three individuals. And I would like to, I looked at the candidates and again was very impressed. I think it's important that we have some representation from the hotel industry, so I'm recommending nominating H.C. Patel for one of those vacant positions. I think it's also important to have somebody from very active in our community and in the business community, and I'm recommending Dan Newton for the second position. And Justin Fortney was an existing member. He was on the one-year term. I just feel like it's important that there be continued some continuity there with Justin Fortney, and that would be the third individual that I would recommend for the council.
I would like to recommend one person instead of one of the ones you nominated or recommended. Is that a possibility?
It is.
I would like to see Kathy Cordes on there. She's a representative of the community. She has a marketing degree. She has extensive, you know, in the inbound travel and outbound travel for many years. I think she would be a great asset to the board.
I would also know, I think those are all great people. I think Van French would be good because he's with the Pollard, and I think that's a, he's an asset in that way, so I wish there's five openings.
Yes, I think in one respect it's a very difficult position, decision, I mean. In other respect, I think it's kind of easy because they're all quality individuals and all qualified candidates.
What hotel does Mr. Patel run? I didn't see it on his application.
It's the Sleep Inn, the, is it the Quality Sleep Inn? On I-35.
I recommend that you guys make a single nominations and take votes on those as you go through and see who comes out. So, seven nominated them all at one time, just go through individually and make nominations and go forward, so.
Okay.
Well, I wanted to, I wanted to discuss Michael Mactoff as well, who runs the operator of the Best Western on I-35.
Correct.
Okay. I like Michael, but here's the problem I have with that. Doesn't live in the city limits of Guthrie.
You don't have to on his board.
I know, but he's in Edmonds where he's living in.
But it's actually not a he, it's a she.
She, well, I'm sorry. Same thing. What I'm saying is I would like to have him kind of be in the areas, is what I'm trying to say. See what I'm saying? Really require us to be in here. I know it's the same thing with the school district, but I'd rather have, you live in this, at least say, I live in Guthrie instead of Edmond. That doesn't look good.
So, we can get started. I will second Cheryl's nomination.
Okay, there's a motion on Kathy Cordes and a second. Is there any further discussion on Kathy?
Other than from me, I just think she would be an excellent choice for many reasons, but the two most obvious to me are her marketing degree and her experience in travel inbound and outbound, and I think that's huge.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for Ren.
Okay, let's read the votes. It's six to one in favor of Kathy Cordes, position number one.
I would second the emotion for Van French that Mr. Wood made, too. I think that being a member of the Pollard, seeing how the people are that come to town and understanding that is a good fit for CBB.
Any other discussion? Okay, submit your vote, please. Let's read the votes. Oh, are they all in? Oh, we have a disconnect.
There's something wrong.
Okay, we'll move on to another nomination.
Well, Justin Fortney, I would second your nomination for him.
Okay.
Assuming you nominated him.
I did. I did nominate him. Justin's been active in a lot of activities around our community and, again, has represented, been on the board or bureau for one year. I think there's some good continuity for him to continue. I think, again, I think he has a very solid, not only reputation, but perspective of Guthrie and where we should be going in terms of tourism and bringing businesses in.
I concur with that. I think he's an excellent choice.
Any other discussion? Okay, submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for Ren.
Okay, by a vote of six to one, Justin Fortney is continuing on, filling one of the three vacancies.
Second Dan Newton.
Okay, I had made that nomination, and the reasons, he's very active in the business community. I think that he is, has been actively engaged in a number of community, of civic activities, is involved with the chamber. I think is a good, would be a good connection there with the chamber also. My thoughts. Anybody else have any discussion? Okay, submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for Ren.
Okay, read the votes. Unanimous for Dan Newton to be the third new member of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Item number five, discussion and possible action on ordinance, adopting ordinance 3275, State Motor Vehicle Code, significant, significant state ordinance, but to apply that to all of our city. Any discussion from?
Yeah, I'll kind of give you guys a little history on this. We had an email from Z. Thomas regarding the citizens' request for us to look at the banning of texting while driving, which will be active November 1st based upon Oklahoma State statutes. After conversation with staff and particular discussions with our police chief, we both have executed Title 47 statutes within both of our cities that we'd come from, and we just asked that city council adopt the Title 47, which will automatically allow our police officers to go out and execute against Oklahoma State statutes that are in Title 47. Instead of us adopting a whole list of ordinances, we're just gonna adopt the title and proceed forward. So, any changes they make at the state level and the forward automatically come down to our ability to execute within our corporate limits.
So, just clarification, so if we don't adopt this, that state law could not be enforced in city?
Not the stuff that's not in Title 47 we don't already have on the books.
Okay. This is just more all-encompassing.
Is there a lot that we don't have on the books?
Yes.
Randall?
Yeah, there is. No, I think it's a good move. Bruce Coleman, we discussed this.
Well, yeah, it's pretty significant. I tried to go through the read on it, and I'd still be there.
Yeah.
Title 47 is like this.
That's what wore the battery down on your iPad, Zach, going through that. I will entertain a motion in a second to adopt the state vehicle code.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we have to adopt it so we can find out what's in it.
I'm sure that we have all read it. Please submit your votes. Let's read the votes, please. Unanimous that we adopt the city vehicle code as an ordinance.
And since it does have an emergency clause, I'd just ask that you take a vote on that clause separately.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we're voting on the emergency clause of the vehicle code?
Yes.
State Motor Vehicle Code.
Comes effective immediately if you approve the emergency.
Soon as we vote this in, he's gonna hand you your first ticket here in a minute.
Question, though, because this is state law November 1st, so.
Well, this is. That's texting and driving.
Texting is.
Correct. But there's. Yeah, everything in Title 47 will become effective immediately.
Okay, okay. So, this expands it to make sure it includes the texting and.
Yeah, well, it includes everything as of tonight if you pass the emergency.
All right. Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for Ren.
Read the votes. Unanimously approve the emergency segment of that code also. Item number six, discussion and possible action concerning ordinance 3276, which amends ordinance 3239, our stabilization fund, which is basically our, the equivalent of a rainy day fund, I guess would be somewhat the common language of it, for our, for our community. Staff, comment?
Yeah, this, the ordinance would effectively eliminate the cap, the maximum amount that we could have in our stabilization fund going forward. Council will have the ability to put as much money in the stabilization fund as possible. The other effect of this ordinance would set the minimum amount in the stabilization fund for the city at $1 million. Currently, we have a formula that is based upon audited financial statements from the previous fiscal year, and based upon where we are currently sitting within the stabilization fund, we either set one of two amounts, a minimum or a maximum. But in order to clarify it both for council staff and an average citizen coming off the street, we want to set that amount at $1 million. The city currently has $800,000 in our, essentially the general fund, of our general fund, and we have a little over $700,000 in our stabilization fund. So, if we enact this ordinance tonight, we'll be transferring over the $218,000 and change in order to get to our million-dollar amount on the stabilization fund. And at that point in time, we will be abiding by the ordinance as it sets tonight. So, more than anything else, what we're trying to do is clarify where we at, where we are, and also allow for us to have enough operational funds to operate the city on a month-to-month basis. So, I'll be, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
So, the question I have, so right at this point, we've got $782,797 in the fund, right?
Yes.
And we have 800 and how much in general?
What was the end of the final September statement?
Seventy.
There you go, 770.
How much?
770,000.
770,000. So, we're gonna move 212,000 over to the stabilization.
Stabilization.
218,000. 218,000, making it a million. And then, we're gonna roughly take 550,000, 60,000, whatever's left, and we're gonna do what with it?
That will be our operational monies for a month-to-month.
That's.
Bills, payroll, et cetera.
Okay, so, but doesn't, and I know that I wasn't even gonna, when you say that's gonna be our operational money, don't we, if we didn't have that, don't we have operational money?
No, that is the operational money for the city.
So, our budget came short?
No. I think our budget came in target, target for the last fiscal year. What this ordinance is doing is essentially cleaning up what we had done in the past where we didn't essentially pay over to the stabilization amount, the amount that was in the previous ordinance. So, we're trying to balance both our fiduciary responsibility for having a stabilization amount and also operational funds that we're able to make all of our commitment payments on a month-to-month basis.
Okay, because when I was going through the budget before, prior to even coming on council, I was looking in just the numbers I was running, a $200-some-thousand shortfall for last year's budget, which obviously just ended. And so, that didn't happen. So, this stabilization money that should have been transferred, had it been transferred, where would we be?
I think they just didn't budget for the transfer, correct? So, at the end of the day, it was just never in the budget.
That's what it was. It was just never, it was just thrown in the general fund and not.
Well, it wasn't thrown anywhere.
That's what I mean, but it just stayed in the general fund.
Right.
Yes.
So, it was never budgeted.
It would have effectively been transferred only if there was a surplus in the budget, then.
Yeah, and had we transferred it, then we would not have money for operations. If we transferred it based on the ordinance, we wouldn't have had money for operations.
So, therefore, the budget came up short. It had to.
No, no, it just means that that ordinance was too personal.
The way I explain it is that it was accounted for but never cash-valued in the fact that you guys have in your packet showing how much money is owed to the stabilization fund, and it can continue to be owed, but it was never actually cash-transferred over to it.
So, when we did last year's budget, and I know you weren't part of it, Bruce, but when, so when we did 2014's budget, we just based it on not following an ordinance of putting $800-some-thousand into the stabilization fund, which is a law.
I don't.
I would say that we didn't follow the ordinance because it's still in the books. I mean, there's that.
But we can't do it because that'll bury the city if we move it.
It would, yeah, because we owe it right now, by the old ordinance, $567,000 based on 2014 figures. If you throw in 2015, we owe it almost $900,000, and we only have 770,000 in operations.
Right.
So, what we're trying to, again, balance between what is fiscally responsible for us into having a proper stabilization fund, which we feel as a staff is a million dollars, and also what our operational needs are going forward to on a month-to-month basis. So, past practice in regards to how much money's flowing in and flowing out has indicated to us that these are amounts that need to be set within the ordinance as we go forward. If we see that something is different after this next fiscal year, we'll come back and recommend an amendment change then, or let you guys know at any point in time during the fiscal year if we'll be receiving any grants or needing to make any expenditures out of there that will be coming out of the stabilization fund, and that would require the five-fifth vote and us following, abiding by the four measurements that are in the ordinance.
Okay, so if we didn't pass this, then we have to go to a five-seven vote to pull it out of the, pull it out of the rainy day fund. In other words, if we took this money that's owed to the rainy day fund and put it in there, okay, then we're gonna have to follow up with an immediate five-to-seven vote to pull it back out because we're gonna bury the city if we do that.
That would be considered emergency. I agree.
So, if we approve this, then it is also approving the transfer of the $218,000 or whatever to create the million-dollar minimum.
On the city side, yes.
On the city side?
Yes.
On the city side?
Yes.
There's a similar action on the public works side, but this is the city side?
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion then to approve this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
I'll vote for Ren.
Let's see the votes. It's unanimous to approve the ordinance 3276, the stabilization fund policy. City, may I ask your report?
I will echo some of the information that was given to us in our workshop today is that we'll be looking at future relations with Crescent EMS. We've been informed that we may be going up there temporarily, and Chief Harlow and myself will be in communication with them for what is needed permanently in that part of Logan County when it comes to EMS services. And we'll keep you updated and bring back the information that is needed, and if there's gonna be any additional agreements or budget amendments made to this council. So, that's, information's out there that we went over in the workshop, but just in case anyone missed that on GTV20, I wanted to allow them to know that, too, in this council meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, just for public disclosure, I represent the city of Crescent, but I do not represent the 522 ambulance district, so they're two different entities, so I want you to be aware of that.
All right, so there's not a conflict of interest there?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Councilman Ed Wood.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Thank you, both chiefs. Thank you for doing what you do. Thank you for giving us the update on the fire department and whatever thing, and you're doing a great job with what you have to work with. Thank you very much. I also want to mention that we're coming into the holiday time of year. There's been a lot of, oh, because we live in an oil-producing state, has gone through a lot of layoffs and things. There's a lot more burden on our, oh, charity foundations and different things. God's Food Bank and all other foundations, please remember them as we're coming in so that they can have enough food. Please help fund them for this upcoming holiday season, and start thinking about it now. It's still a little early, but start preparing to help them. They need all the help they can get. Thank you.
Councilman Thomas.
That's interesting. I just want to say, I was amazed at how fast they got that ordinance put together because I just got that email a week or so ago from a lady here in town who was asking about texting and how we would enforce it and that sort of thing, and appreciate the fast response from the staff on that.
Okay. Councilman Bothrowd.
I'll echo that, and also, you know, echo the, I know that finance that Kim and Bruce put a tremendous amount of time into this, and it's appreciated, believe me.
Councilwoman Pageant?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all of the staff members, the employees, everybody that has anything to do with the city of Guthrie, because it seems like they always seem to step up to the plate. They always manage to get things done. They step in and help other people, and I think that's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Taylor?
I echo what they've been saying, too. I appreciate what the staff does. I know they've been out mowing grass lately, trying to get it finished up, so that's great. Thank you, guys. Also, Guthrie's playing football tonight, or, I'm sorry, Friday night. Southeast is going to be here, I think, at 7:00. We still have a chance to finish in the top two, and maybe we can go play in state. That's what I'm hoping for. And OSU has homecoming this weekend for the OU fans. I don't know what they're doing, anyway. Other than that, we'll just move right along. That's it.
Okay.
And for the Texas fans.
Councilman John Wood.
The only thing I think of is that, I want to think Maxine and her crew, I saw, I was out walking this morning and saw that they're doing some sealing out there. I think it was on Springer, something like that, in that area, and so they had a lot of crew out, and you could see all the lines and stuff. But I think people don't understand that, you know, these roads don't last forever, and I think the sealer that we got this last year will really make the roads last longer. So, I appreciate you guys working on that and making our roads last longer, so.
Very good, very good. Item number nine is to consider approval to convene to executive session. We have two items of legal issues. Should we do public works first before we go into executive session so we don't come back and?
Yeah, it's kind of different on the.
Can you have two meetings open at once?
We kind of moved it.
Can we have two meetings open at once like that?
Recess, council, and do the public work you can.
And that way, it's over with when we come back? We never. Well, it's pretty quick. Well, okay, let me, let me recess the city council meeting and then move, call to order our Public Works Authority meeting, since that is a short one. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the Public Works Authority of October 6th. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Submit your vote.
Ryan.
Okay. Almost, let's, let's see the votes. Unanimous to approve that consent agenda, and then we have the resolution 2015-20, meaning the stabilization fund, which is the same process. The numbers are a little bit different, but it's the same process that we just previously discussed on the stabilization fund of the city.
So moved.
I'm just asking staff if he has any comments first.
No, we still remove the maximum cap, and we also placed in there a million-dollar minimum amount, but we also showed in there that we'll be actually physically transferring over $105,000 for the next fiscal year so you get us caught up to that million dollars for the stabilization fund. Unlike the city, it is a lower amount and needs to be caught up in order for us to reach that minimum amount, and we are recommending that we do that over the next five years.
So, there's 351 in there now, and we're looking to put 105 in this fiscal year?
Yep, each fiscal year, obviously dependent upon if we can, but that's the plan.
Right.
That can be amended as we, as we look at our future resources. So, there's a little bit further time to achieve that million-dollar balance there than it is for the city, but that's, but it creates a plan to make it happen. Any further questions or discussion?
I just, I just want to say I'm glad we're doing this and taking it seriously. I think we've just, we've kind of kicked the can a little bit in the last few years, but the stabilization plan's gonna be really important when we have a recession in the near future or not, you know. Next time we have a recession, we're gonna be glad we had this, so I just want to say that. So, thank you, staff, for.
We hope we don't, but it's better, it's better to plan, plan ahead and be economically prudent and safe, so. Please submit your votes.
I'll vote for Ren.
See the votes. Unanimous to accept resolution 2015-20, stabilization fund for the Public Works Authority. Public Works Authority is adjourned. Public Works Authority is adjourned. I reconvene our city council. Item number nine on the city council agenda, which is to consider approval to convene to executive session to discuss a couple of legal actions that we have. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that part? Vote, please.
All votes are in.
Unanimous that we go to executive session. As it relates to items number 10 and number 11, no action has been taken on either the rural, rural water district issue nor the initiative petition issue. And with that, we are adjourned.